Good evening, I'd like to welcome you to the City Council Meeting of April 20, 2015. If you stand with me for the pledge allegiance place.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, or which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We can have the roll call please.
Councilmember Althoff?
Here.
Councilmember Ellison?
Here.
Councilmember Hall?
Here.
Councilmember Mayer?
Here.
And Mayor Hodges?
Here.
Thank you. Item two, approval of the agenda. Any additions or corrections to the agenda?
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
I will second.
I move in second to approve the agenda, all in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Item three is approval of the minutes of our previous meeting back on April 6th. It was in our packets with a one small correction with the new page. Any additional sort of corrections to be added?
I will move for approval as presented.
I will second. And move in second to approve the minutes of April 6th. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Approval of the accounts payable. Item four in our packet. And for our review, any questions or concerns?
I move that we approve the accounts payable as presented.
I will second.
And move in second to approve the accounts payable. And for this we would need a roll call.
Councilmember Althoff?
Yes.
Councilmember Ellison?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Mayer?
Yes.
And Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Thank you. Item five is citizen comments for any items that do not appear on the agenda. So if any citizen would like to address the council, this would be the time to do so. Read assets, you just state your name and keep your comments to about five minutes.
Perry Deacham, I reside at 924 Riverside Drive. I'm a board member of Lowell Lake Power. And just as information and inviting the public, this Wednesday, we have adopted part of the Showboat Highway coming into town. And we're going to do a cleanup on Wednesday in the, we'll be meeting at approximately quarter after five in the lower lot at the township hall. So invite any citizens that want to come out and lend a hand picking up trash. Greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Perry? Thanks for the work that Lowell Lake Power and more employees are doing with that project. You will now scare to go to the council next night. Saying none, we'll move on to item number six. Old Business and Strategic Goals Report and Pending amounts of projects. Mr. Hall? And no further updates on either one. We'll be happy to answer any questions if you have. Saying none, we'll move on to New Business. Item number seven. And item A is Presentation for Lowell Wellness. And Jody Seeks, welcome.
Thank you. This is my 30th presentation, and this is the most efficient group I've ever seen. It's like seven acres here you're on. Yeah. Pleasure to be here. Thank you for having me. I serve as the Program Director for Lowell Wellness, a first of its kind initiative here in the city and community of Lowell. And I did have an opportunity to meet with some of the council members earlier in March and give them a brief heads up of what was going on with our initiative. And today I'm here to tell you more details about it, the launch of our project, and how it may benefit the residents of Lowell and the city as well. This was a, March was a busy month for us. This photograph was taken at our press release, which was attended by about 30 people. We were honored to have both our superintendent of schools, as well as Paul Brand, the president and CEO of the Alliance for Health. And our keynote speaker was Dr. Tom Haas from the Grand Valley State University. We were delighted to have him kick off our initiative and what it means to the community of Lowell, West Michigan, and for that matter, the state of Michigan as a first of its kind initiative. As a show of hands, including those in the audience, how many have heard of the Lowell Wellness Initiative? Okay, pretty good. How many have heard of a survey connected to that project? All right. Last question, this is a quiz. How many have had a chance to participate in the survey yet? Okay. And I am going to adjust my talk accordingly to give you some background information on where we're going from here. I'm delighted to see that. First of all, by definition, Lowell Wellness is a locally based health initiative using data-driven programs to empower a community towards wellness. So we're looking at health parameters. We're using data gained from our residents to design programs around those needs and those services desired to create a culture of wellness for Lowell. The phases that we're looking at are one of three, and the survey is the first of those, which is the actual collection of data gained from our residents on health and wellness issues, as well as services and programs they would like to see in the area. And then we also look at unmet needs, and there's also a commentary section there for open ended questions. I mention it's the first of its kind, and that is because we are not a health plan or health department. We are not trying to reduce any particular costs involved, and we are not required to do this survey as a community for funding. Most surveys of this nature and this magnitude are conducted by health departments, or employers, or health systems. And they are usually done so in order to reduce costs or get a feel for the health needs of a given population. We're actually doing the first of its kind population management project so that we're not looking at the health of individual employees, and we're not trying to improve anybody's bottom line. We're simply the first community in Michigan to design a survey that's gauged to improve the quality of life by their desires for our citizens. Our stakeholders are Lowell Community Wellness. They are the fiduciary for our funding, which in this first phase was obtained from the Lowell Area Community Fund, or as I call it, St. Harold's Fund. Our primary beneficiaries are the Flat River Outreach Ministries and our school district. But secondary to those organizations would be our municipalities, so the city of Lowell and our Lowell Township and Lowell Brigence Township, which reside completely within the Lowell School District, and the seven other townships that remain in a part of that district. We are under contract with the Community Research Institute. They are the data arm of Grand Valley State University. They specialize in this type of data and community research, and they are under contract to help design our survey, which was about six months in the making. They are working on collecting the data. They are housing that data. They will analyze it and then publish a report for our community. We also are very honored to have a master's public health program, a new program here at Grand Valley State University. And we have over 30 students part of that program that are working either through a class requirement or through volunteer capacity, through public health, which really helps us bring some outside expertise in addition to our advisory board. This was a photo again from our press release, our press conference, and you'll see the about our shift, this was our morning shift, about a dozen students from Grand Valley. Felice Passdew is lying, she's good at jumping in pictures, and she got to hear about the initiative, and then went back to her house as well. And then our project has gained and garnered some attention and therefore support from a number of the heavy hitters in healthcare in West Michigan. The Vice President of Human Resources from Spectrum Health is on our advisory board, as is the Vice President of Clinical Outcomes from Priority Health. The Alliance for Health is there as well, serving as an advisory capacity, and then even the Grand Rapids Chamber of Commerce. All of these people have connections to Lowell. As a matter of fact, the Grand Rapids Area Chamber of Commerce, their health liaison person who sits on committees in Landscout and Healthcare happens to live in Lowell, and he and his wife have a family here. So we've got a real broad base of not only those at the grassroots level, but pulling in expertise from outside. We also have some partners at the state level. Curious if anybody knows who's in that photo besides myself. Of course, it was morning and it was cold. Anybody recognize Lieutenant Governor? Okay, so we look a little different. I had a chance to spend some time with Lieutenant Governor on a run out in Portland, and his staffers weren't there, but he gave me 15 minutes anyway to tell them about our project. He has a passion for healthcare, both in his family and his background. His father's an internal medicine physician from Ionia. And I would guess similar to Lowell in that it's geographically isolated from metropolitan areas, about the same population size. So he definitely saw the advantages of looking specifically at a community. And also, he asked me questions about, specifically about mental health, and was delighted that we were taking that component and looked at some of the barriers. So we've got some high level support, and we'll be starting to work with MDECH on our project as well. We look at the survey itself. We ask the basic questions. Most of these come from the Behavioral Risk Factor Survey, which is a 30-year nationwide project looking at health and health issues. It does include the chronic diseases of heart disease, diabetes, weight management. But then we also added a component from our health services, because we do see that in our community we are underserved in that capacity. We also looked at access to healthcare. We asked if people had healthcare insurance, either paid for themselves, subsidized, or through their employer, both last year, which was the first year of the Affordable Care Act, as well as this year. So we have a gauge of how many people in our community are involved. We'll also know by income level on the survey if people would qualify for services that they are not currently taking advantage of. Probably the most important components, though, are our ability to look at the barriers to health. So our survey has been designed specifically to look at transportation needs, employment and income, as well as internet access. All of those play a vital role in someone's ability to get preventative care, access to care, and referral treatments as well. Then there's lastly a section on community input, and this asks for four specific questions of individuals, and the first being, if you could change one and only one thing about your emotional and physical health, what would that be? That's an important question, because we're not asking what your doctor wants you to do, what your spouse is asking you to do, what your employer is requiring you to do. This is asking residents, what are you ready to address? What is your number one priority? This will help us gauge a base of programming that we'll look at for pilots. We ask about the biggest health challenge. We ask about other health issues, so we're looking at multifamily issues. Could be a family that has several children in school, two incomes, problems with transportation, but they're also trying to take care of an older parent. We do ask some questions about housing as well. Now last one asked, what facilities, services, or recreational opportunities would you like to see here in the community? So this is a chance for people to give their input on things that they would like to see. Some of the common things we hear are maybe canoe and kayak rentals, so we can take advantage of our natural resources in the area. Another one is expanding our trail system, which we are noted for. So connecting our community both north and south, working on enhancing projects that are already out there through some of our municipalities. And the one that I've heard the last 10 years online is, where's the pool? Keep caring about this pool. If you want a pool, put it in your survey. And that shows the capacity to this to act as a, really a pre-feasibility survey. So if enough people are looking at certain items, we will then pass that information on to those who can help address them. As far as the survey itself, we are looking at the geographic parameters of our Lowell School District. If you look at the city and our two principal townships, there's a residency of about 14,000. If you include the outlined areas, it's right around 25,000. So we are looking to people who live and/or work in that geographic parameter. Paper, sorry, the survey is available on online or paper form. We're meeting this month as our advisory board to figure out where we're going to put paper locations, and how to coordinate them and collect them, and still respect the confidentiality and anonymous basis of the survey. But we have online, we, anybody can take that survey. It's been up, it's off launch in February, and then we officially kicked it off with the expo. Right now, we're looking at our survey strategy. We're working with our advisory board to gather listers, e-blasts, and networking opportunities such as this to get the word out. We'll be looking at community events. We plan to be at the Summer Concert Series. We'll be at the Farmer's Market. We'll be at Riverwalk Festival. And we have designed, I think we've got a pretty robust program to reach out to those in the community who do not have internet access. So we'll be teaming up with local churches and doing a program at Key Heights, Global Home Development Park. We'll be looking at Valley Vista opportunities and working with that community. We're going to be looking at pockets of people that we know do not currently have access to internet, so we can specifically take surveys there, provide healthy snacks, and team up with other collaborative efforts in the area. Our goal is to get our surveys completed by August. We'd like the first part of August, because at that point, we will look at gaps in our survey. If we're missing a certain demographic or a certain level of income that we're trying to get and is not being served. We do have money in our survey to go door to door to make this as comprehensive as possible in representing the demographics of our school district. So now I know you're asking yourself, what can I do to help move this project along? I want to thank all of you that have taken the survey, and we are in line and targeting for hitting our benchmarks for surveys so far. But we would like to get more help and encourage people to participate in the survey. So if you haven't done it, please make sure you have. And help us promote the survey through any listers or email list, events that you can think of. We will have a tent. We will be available to take this on the road. We expect to partner with our churches in new surveys on Sundays. We're going to be doing outreach to employers in the area as well. And the biggest message we need to get out is that our ability to have a representative analysis of our district depends on us getting surveys from everyone over the age of 18. So it is not per household. It is every person in the household over 18. That's men, women, children, grandparents, aunts, and uncles. So that's the one message we could really use your help in getting out today. I have cards up here that'll show you how to find us on Facebook. Follow us on Twitter. Because Lowell Community Wellness is, serving as our fiduciary, their website is our access point, and my name and owner are on the cards, and you can reach me if you have any suggestions as to how to get the word out there. I do want to take a moment and ask for any questions, and I'll close with a video that was made by the high school digital imaging class and show you what they worked on for you two, but I'll entertain any quick questions you may have about the survey itself. All right then, let's check out the video. I'm going to show you the Lowell Community Wellness page. You go to the page and hit survey, which will take you to click on the survey here. Survey takes about 15 minutes, so do yourself a favor and sit down at home or where you have 10, 15 minutes to think about it. Give those four questions that we talked about ahead of time. Give those some forethought, and then you will click on the survey. And I'm going to close with that presentation that this high school made for us. I wonder why we made this video, we made the video, it's slugging obviously. I thank you for your time, and I invite any questions or comments by email, text, or phone. Thank you very much.
Jody, thank you very much, and thank you and your group for making you all continuing to make Lowell a better community.
Happy to.
Thank you. Moving on, item B, Arbor Day proclamation. And thank you Mayor for attending. She serves on the Arbor Board, and they have a mayor's proclamation, which I shall read, and hopefully the council will adopt. We'll see here. The proclamation for Arbor Day reads as follows. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas the holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, lowering our heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable source of giving us paper, wood for homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore be it resolved, I, James W. Hodges, Mayor of the city of Lowell, do hereby proclaim the last Friday in April as Arbor Day in the city of Lowell, and I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support the efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant and care for trees, to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. And so reads the proclamation.
I move that we accept this proclamation.
Have support? I move in support. Thank you. And all those in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Dare you. Very good. And we will be celebrating Arbor Day. I believe there will be a planting and activities planned.
Yep, there is a replanting at noon at Lowell Family Chiropractic at 1425 West Main Street. We decided to do a native tree, a native redbud tree that will plant there in honor of Arbor Day. So please come out if you want to come see us plant a tree.
Would you pardon?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on then to item C is Donna Drive Resurfacing Project. And for this, I guess we would begin with Mr. Hall?
Thank you. There's quite an explanation in your packet, but there's also, I want to make sure that everybody's had a chance to see the memo that I left at your, at your spots this evening. We've been going through quite a process, and I guess maybe to back up. Donna Street is a project that is eligible for CDVG funding, and we would receive about $28,000 for the project from CDVG. This will be the end of our eligibility for CDVG funding, because we pulled out of the Urban County Program with Kent County. That means that we have a fairly tight deadline of June 30 to not only complete the project, but complete the paperwork that goes along with the project. Because CDVG is federal money, there's Davis Bacon Act, and there's quite a bit that's involved in terms of the paperwork side of things in order to get the project completed, and then receive those reimbursement funds, because it is a reimbursement grant, we'll receive the money upfront. So with that being said, you may recall, I think it was about a month or a month and a half ago, that I came to you and we de-allocated the CDVG funds for the Donna Street project. I think in an email update to you a couple of weeks ago, I had written to you that the condition of the road as we were putting it out for bid was much worse than we thought it was going to be, and the project was going to cost us quite a bit more than we originally anticipated. I since that time, as I've been going through, not only preparing the budget for you for next year and our accommodations for next year, been able to go through this year's budget, and I'm confident now that we'll be able to increase our general fund transfer to the street fund to be able to cover this project and have enough money to be able to complete it by June 30. So I'm not as concerned as I was a couple of weeks ago, but I had at least wanted to put you on notice that it was going to be tight, and it's still going to be tight. But I'm confident that we can get this project done. So in the meantime, we went out for bid. We received three bids on the project. The bids were from Olin Excavating for $79,875, Superior Asphalt for $85,555, and then Black Over Transport Inc. for $87,470. After going through a process of pretty extensive due diligence and making some phone calls today, and having some discussions today, I'm recommending that you accept the bid from Olin Excavating for $79,875.
Just a question. Is there anything in this bid or anything in this contract that would have the date, the completion date? Is there something in there that if they don't make the completion date, we're going to lose the money? But do we have something, a contingency in our contract that they're required to do that, or?
That's a good question. And I'm going to turn to our good friend Dave Austin to maybe help out a little bit. Dave, City Executive Williams and Works, you've been working on the documents and working on the contract for us, and I'm going to guess I'm going to let Dave.
Yes. As is standard with your contracts, we don't have a date per se, but we do have 21 calendar days from the time that we issue notice to proceed. We anticipate that we'll be able to issue that notice to proceed soon, and that the construction certainly can be completed within that time. As the manager mentioned, the construction is probably the easy part. This is federal paperwork that has to, we have to pay the contractor and turn in all receipts and everything before the end of the fiscal year. Your contract does have a liquidated damages clause, but it's not intended to recover the amount that you would lose in the event that you lost your grant. If the contractor through negligent acts on his own were to not complete the job in 21 calendar days, then you would be able to request liquidated damages, but they're only in line with like a couple hundred dollars per day. And your grant amount is $20,000.
And it's not the ability, but I mean circumstances, as far as what if you can't get materials, what if the weather turns? There are a lot of, you know, possible, potential things that could prevent us from doing this on time. So that's like the, what is it, $28,000 question? We don't get it done on time?
Correct. And part of this is outside of, obviously, the contractor's ability, and also outside of the city. This project was just approved by the block and that folks. The nature of the project is a little different than what we've done in the past. This street does not have curb and gutter for its entire length. Majority of it is a valley gutter. And the CDVG staff took quite a bit of time reviewing the project with HUD to make sure that it in fact qualified, that we were trying to use these funds for this type of mill and resurface project, and not a full reconstruction project as we've done in the past, for instance, on Sibley and Center. And so we didn't, the city didn't receive authorization to even proceed with bids until the last minute. So I think everybody, and the county is cognizant of that, and the staff there is, for instance, we've already set a date for the pre-construction, being two days from now. Normally that takes a couple of weeks. So they're aware of the urgency, and they're doing everything on their part to move things along as well.
So in your expert opinion, you think it's doable?
We have plenty of time and absent weather like we had two years ago at this time, the weather shouldn't be an issue. Paperwork is a concern only because we have to, the contractor and everybody, all three parties have to move their paperwork around as fast as possible. But there should be plenty of time.
But worst case scenario, if we had to come up with that $28,000, would the other project that we're doing qualify for CDVG funds?
Worst case scenario, I'm going to recommend that we look for the general fund and fund balance on the general fund to cover it. That's to be our worst case scenario.
Okay. I mean, it sounds like everything's going to go, but it just, it's a lot of money and...
It is a lot of money. And I wouldn't want it to impact the, you were talking about the Eve Street project. I would not want to impact that. I'd still want to be able to move forward with that. And it's one of the, I'm going to talk about when we talk about the budget, I'm going to talk about fund balance, and it's one of the reasons that you built fund balance is if you run into, you know, unexpected issues, and to me, this would be one of those cases where I think we could justify just using a fund balance in order to, or knowing that we have that in order to get the project good.
Thank you. That answers my question, so I think you've got it covered as far as that goes.
Other questions? But she has. She covered everything that Annie is going to ask.
I move that we accept the bid from Olin Excavating to resurface Donna Drive.
I will second.
And move in second to award the bid to Olin Excavating for the sport of Donna Drive. All those in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on then to item D, Resolution for Tasers Grant.
It says resolution. Chief Bucor can cover details if you have questions, but basically, we have three tasers that we would like to replace. We can get a grant through Michigan Power Plan, which is our insurance carrier, our pool chance carrier, for $5,000. That would take care of all but about $1,400 minus $1,500 of the cost of replacement. The power plan requires that there be council action to... The power plan requires that there be council action to authorize the requests, and that's why we're
Any other questions?
Just general, how long is the life of a taser? I'm just curious.
About five years.
Five years, okay.
And the batteries start not sparking correctly, and there can be accidental discharges and things like that, too. They're beyond their usable lifecycle.
Okay. Thank you, I'm just curious, I think you might think about
Next, I'll discard for all this. I don't really care. But, thank you. Any other questions or concerns?
I will move that we authorize the grant application.
I will second.
Been moved and seconded, if this is not a resolution, all those in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item E, budget recommendation, and so Mr. Howe, we turn the word to you for the initial two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen fiscal year budget.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members, you have before you a notebook, the notebook has the entire budget recommendations inside of it. And then inside the cover, there's also a copy of the presentation that I'm going to go over, so if you have any notes you want to make, questions that you want to ask later, that should be helpful for you. So presented for your consideration are my recommendations for the city of Lowell, two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen fiscal year budget. A considerable amount of staff time has gone into preparing these recommendations. And I'm personally grateful to the city employees who worked tirelessly as a team, to certain citizens of this great community. Especially those who assisted in the preparation of these recommendations. We spend a lot of time looking back and forth, a lot of meetings and digging things up, and so folks worked pretty hard on this. I'm just the guy that puts it together and to mix it all add up and then puts it in a nice project package. So thanks to all the city employees who have contributed to this. You adopted a strategic plan that serves as the framework through which these recommendations have been developed. And the budget reflects your leadership and the direction that you give to me to work toward our vision of making the city of Lowell the vibrant core of a thriving community. And within that strategic plan, there are strategic focus areas that are involved around community collaboration, government efficiency and effectiveness, quality neighborhoods, economic vitality and sustainability, and diverse recreational and cultural opportunities. During the last few years, we've used the strategic plan to really weather a financial recession and to work from recovery to stability. And last year, when I made these recommendations to you, I had said that I felt that we were at the point where we were stable. That maybe we weren't totally out of the woods, but that we were at a point of stability. And there were a number of major accomplishments that moved us toward that stability. About four years ago, we eliminated a projected five-hundred-thousand-dollar deficit across all funds. It was about a hundred and forty-three thousand in planned use of fund balance and general fund. And when you looked at water and sewer and some of the other funds, we had a pretty substantial deficit that we needed to find a way to overcome. One of the major ways that we were able to do that is we saved more than eight-hundred-thousand dollars by refinancing debt. A big part of that was the city hall debt. And you've seen this slide before where we had the original city hall bond payment, and then refunded the city hall bond. And we saved over half a million dollars just with that. The remainder of that eight-hundred thousand was through a water bond that we had outstanding, and we refinanced that as well and saved quite a bit on that. I'll add that Lowell and Power was also able to refinance some debt and save some money at the same time. And when you add it all up, as a city as a whole, we actually saved more than a million dollars just by refinancing all of that debt. We've also during this time nearly doubled fund balance in the general fund. We, several years ago, had a fund balance of, if you go back to oh-eight, oh-nine, of just a little bit over a hundred thousand dollars. In two thousand eleven, it was a little under three hundred thousand, and by two thousand fourteen, we've been able to increase that to about six hundred thousand. And that's that item that I referred to when we were talking about Donna Street, that's why you build fund balance, so that when you have those emergencies, then you have the ability to respond to those emergencies. One of the other reasons that you build fund balance is as you're going out and borrowing and you're being rated by national rating agencies, they look at a number of factors, and we talked about those, but Standard and Poor's increased our rating to an A-plus. And this is significant given our limited resources and the size of our community, I think, and truly the weather in our camp, that we are rated as an A-plus best thing in the force. And we talked about some of those things that contribute to the upgrading to the A-plus, and they look at things like the economy, but they also look at management and rate it as a strong. They look at budgetary flexibility and say we're very strong liquidity, we're very strong budgetary performance, we're very strong. Debt and contingent liabilities, that's an area where we're very weak, and we've talked a little bit about that. I think we'll continue to talk about debt and contingent liabilities, particularly pension and other post-employment benefit funding, that was a negative factor for us. And will continue to be until we start to address that for a long-term plan in place. And then they look at institutional framework, and that's really the city itself, and how does the economy of the city work. We managed the equipment fund out of a negative position. In two thousand eleven, we were required by the Michigan Department of Treasury to create and execute over a five-year period a deficit reduction plan for the equipment fund. We had a negative cash balance, and we were in no shape to not only look at replacing equipment, but we were under notice by Department of Treasury to quite frankly get our house in order and get that taken care of. We were able to, within a two-year period, turn that around and turn the equipment fund around. Not only to the extent that we were able to establish positive cash balance, but we now have an equipment replacement plan in place. And that's in your budget, continuing on that track is in your budget. We'll get into more detail on that as we go through workshops and stuff. But we've replaced a backhoe, we've replaced a pickup truck, and I think what's scheduled for this coming year is another pickup truck and a haul truck. So we've got a couple of other major purchases that we'll be looking at in the equipment fund. We replaced more than a mile of sidewalks, and still have some that we need to work on, and we'll continue to work on sidewalks. And as a matter of fact, Dan and I met with Scott Bosberg last week and had a discussion with him about the criteria that you adopted. And Scott's going to go around by the end of April and have those initial inspections done, so we'll continue on the sidewalk replacement program. But we replaced more than a mile of sidewalks, and most of that we were able to do with grant funds. So we're pretty proud of that. We also during these last few years, we've increased our general fund contributions to streets. There was one year where we increased about twenty-one percent. And during this time of sort of recovery and heading towards stability and trying to build fund balance and trying to secure an upgraded bond rating, we've also, and you heard the auditor talk about it, we've also been able to increase our investment in infrastructure. In fact, since that time, we've completed projects on Hillside Court, Ottawa, Maple, Rand, Bowles, Chatham, and Sibley. We're going to be, as we talked about, doing Donna Drive, and we'll be moving forward on the Avery Street project of this fall. So I would say to you this year that the budget recommendations that I have given you take us from stability to progress. And I'm very hopeful and very confident for the next year and for the future that we can start moving forward. And I believe that it's time to move forward. Looking at some of the big numbers, after years of several severe declines, our major revenue sources are projected to slightly increase during the next year. You can see that, I am not expecting you to pick apart this chart, it's one that you've seen before, the property tax is a major source of revenue. Wastewater and water fees and rates are the next two. Payment lieu of taxes and revenue sharing are the next two, and then fifty-one money, or money that we receive from the state for streets is the next highest source of revenue. In terms of property tax, you can see that going back to ten eleven, we hit a high there. And then we saw severe declines in eleven, twelve, twelve thirteen, kind of stabilized a little bit, thirteen, fourteen, fourteen, fifteen projected was a little stable. But we're looking at about a three percent increase in property tax revenue for the upcoming year. I will tell you that in the DDA, we're looking at more than three percent. And I had a discussion with the DDA last week about not necessarily increasing the budget based on that increasing revenue, but let's keep setting some money aside for capital projects, the DDA tends to be focused on capital projects, and so let's kind of inflate the budget. And it's the same kind of thing, it's the same theme that I'm going to carry with you, that let's not inflate our operational costs, let's start setting some money aside, let's start planning on some facility improvements and capital projects and those types of things, so that if the economy does go south again, then hopefully we're not faced with the kinds of cuts that many municipalities have had to make, including this one over the last six, seven years. The question is often asked, where do property taxes go? Here's a pie chart that shows you that most of the property tax revenue goes to general government and police. The other two larger areas are public works administration and the city hall lot, and then down to the city hall. Revenue sharing from the state is projected to increase slightly. You can see how that was dipping over several years, and we started, a couple of years ago, started to see them increase slightly. And that's looking fairly positive for the future as well. The, as I mentioned, the wastewater and water systems account for nearly a third of our total operational cost. And it's worth noting that we produce water less than a penny a gallon. And what is planned over the next five years is two-point-eight million in improvements. A big part of that is the lift station upgrade debt that we've been talking about. But here's where, and I really want to go back to the staff, with the water staff, I spent some time with Dan and supervisors, and we really spent a lot of time working through a capital plan. And as we get into our budget discussions, I'm going to be able to show you more of that, and I'm really confident with the long-term plan we put together. We also work with Merckmont and United Water to really nail down some wastewater side of things. A long-term capital plan, just some of those items that we really need to focus on over the next five to ten years, over and above the lift station upgrade. I think what's going to happen on the wastewater side, however, is that we are eligible to receive the Saw brand in two thousand sixteen. That Saw grant will walk us through an asset management plan process, and then the end of that asset management process will give us a real solid long-term capital plan, probably over a three to fifty-year period. But that process, I think, is going to give us great data to make sure that we're staying on top of that infrastructure. In terms of rates, everybody always wants to know about water and wastewater rates, and I like to be transparent and upfront about that. On the wastewater side, this year, I'm recommending a freeze, that we not increase the wastewater rates at all. We are, with the rates, the way that they are, we are staying on top of capital purchases. We have sufficient cash reserves to be able to do some upgrades over the next five to ten years. And so the system at this point doesn't require an increase in rates. Water, on the other hand, does require some rate increases. We have some capital improvements, we don't have cash reserves in the water fund, we do have a wastewater fund. And we do have some capital projects over the next couple of years that we really need to focus on, not the one-point-two-million-dollar lift station upgrade, but things like the South Monroe Project, we're talking about a stub out here off Monroe Street. Our new water distribution supervisor, actually, we had a great catch, I thought, where we were talking about Jackson Street and resurfacing Jackson as part of the Avery Street project. And he says, wait a minute, isn't that part of our water liability study that we install water mean there and then create a loop there? And he said, oh, yeah, that's right. And that's his job to catch those things and integrate how we're doing it. And so that may be a project that we step up as well on the water side. But we are going to need to look at water rate increases and decreases. When you combine water and wastewater, the average user of water, wastewater, your average bill would increase by about a dollar nine a month. It'd be about one percent increase when you look at what people actually write a check for. The other slide I like to show you is that in terms of what people pay for city services, people think about their electric bill, they think about their water and sewer bill, they think about property taxes. And I like to just show you what people are paying in terms of city services. And, you know, electric services, and not against electric service, it is costly to produce energy. And a big part of the electric service is just the production and what we have to pay to have the energy supplied to us. But then there's also property taxes, and the amount that's paid for property taxes, and there's sewer and water, and the amount that's paid for those services. And people like to know what those costs are and how they relate to each other. In terms of major expenses and the cost of certain services, water is our most expensive. And wastewater is the second most expensive, and then police and general government are pretty close to the same there. Streets is quite a bit higher since I've shown this graph to you before because of the three-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-dollar Avery Street project, and so that's moved that up by quite a bit. And then Public Works General is the administrative side of Public Works that's allocated in the general fund. So that's just kind of an overview for you of, you know, some of the finances. But I like to take it back to the strategic plan, and the budget document really is, and what you adopt as a budget, really is the tool that we use in order to implement goals that you set of the strategic plan. And we talked earlier in the year about tier-one goals that you had, and those included a street asset management plan and investment options for the little elite funds, downtown banners, lift station upgrade, downtown trail connectors, securing the city funding for the harbor board, round rehab program, and economic department staff. And so I'd like to go through each one of those one by one, just very briefly, and tell you where we're at. In terms of street asset management plan, Donna Street, we talked about, Avery Street, we talked about. At your last workshop, I was working through this planning tool that, because of the light in the room and all that, it was kind of hard to see. But I could, you know, put together that planning tool, and we'll talk about that more at the workshop and at a future meeting. But right now, I'm looking at three hundred thousand each year for the But right now, I'm looking at $300,000 each year for the next six years. I want to throw in just a little bit of information about the proposal that's coming up. I'm not encouraging people to vote yes, I'm not encouraging people to vote no, while I'm being paid for the city. When I get my car to drive home, if somebody wants to give me a call and ask me what my personal feeling is, I can do that. But I can tell you the impact, just in terms of what that proposal may have on the city and city finances. The Down Street project, you just approved a bid for about $80,000 with some of the engineering. It's going to be about an $85,000 to $90,000 project. The Avery Street project is going to be about a $330,000 project. Right now, we receive about $185,000 from, if through Act 51, from the state, and our major street fund, and about $70,000 at local street funds, and we receive about $250,000 from the state. If proposal one passes, we would receive about, after a three-year period, we would receive about another $170,000 in street funding through Act 51. The next issue was investment options in terms of local elite funds. We will work with the local memorial committee, and we completed the local investments with the Grand Art Foundation. Still looking at me and still working with the Parks and Recreation Commission on that issue. Downtown banners, we have them ordered and they're being printed, and we hope to have them up in a couple of weeks. We've been working with Chamber and appreciate the hard work that Liz has done and working with, I think, United Second Company to have these printed for us. And what we try to do is highlight some of the major events that we have within the community. And then there's the general City of Lowell banner. I think we're going to order eight of the City of Lowell banners and try to put them at the light, right around there, and then at both ends of town, a couple of both ends of town. And then intermix four each of the other banners throughout the pools downtown. We roughly are ordering enough to put a banner on every other pool. We're not putting one on every other one, we're starting out by, we're starting out, just getting something started, so we hope to have those up, and I guess that plays within a couple of weeks. The lift station upgrade, I've been giving you some updates on this, and the flow monitors have been placed. We've been exploring putting down geoprobe probes and trying to monitor the groundwater level as well, because we would like that data to go along with the sewer flow. I wish this was done a month ago. We've had a very dry spring, and now we're going to have a week of rain, and I guess I'm just going to hope that over the next couple of months, we have some dry periods and some rain again, so we can get some rain data. One thing that I'll add, I'm jumping ahead a little bit to my manager's report, but our interim director of Public Works, Ron Woods, started today after his long flight back from China. I told him that he would have to be at the council meeting tonight, but he'll be at the, he'll have the council meeting, and we could choose to meet him, and we can talk over there. But Ron has a great background, he worked with DEQ, has a great background in monitoring wastewater, so he and Dan and Mark will talk a little bit more about these groundwater monitoring and this project that we're doing to try to gather a little bit more data, and hopefully he'll have some input, some great input on that. In the meantime, the long-term expense for the lift station upgrade is included in the budget recommendations. I will point that out when we get to the wastewater line, but that is included. The downtown trail connector, LARA is completing its route recommendations, and the next step for the city, I think, will be to review those route recommendations and maybe look at how we might plan on connecting that route to the downtown. We have also been talking about a recreation plan update. That recreation plan would make us eligible for DNR trust fund grants, and that, I think, is going to be the fall project that we'll kind of, Parks and Recreation Commission. In terms of securing funding for the harbor board, that's completed, that is included in the budget recommendations based on the most recent discussion we've taken from the harbor board, so that's done. Round rehabilitation program, we will be eligible for that on July 1 of 2015, and on July 1 of 2015, we'll make a call to Nishtha to start that conversation. And then the last thing on your tier-one goals, economic development staff, that's not addressed in the budget recommendations. I think we need to have further review, further discussion on that issue. I just want you to know that that's not addressed in the recommendations that was sent to you tonight. City finances are extremely complicated. They include federal state funding sources, matching accounting requirements that must be met. It's impossible to discuss every element in a budget that contains more than 100 pages and more than 1,000 line items in a short memoir or a short presentation. I look forward to working with you on this process, though, as we develop the budget for next year, and I guess I just, I want to remind you of a little of the discussion that I had about a year ago, what unites us is greater than what divides us. And we've seen that many, many times, where we've been able to take the collective wisdom of this council and move it toward a very productive solution to the problems that we face. And I'm certainly happy to be a part of what that says. As we approach the second anniversary of the record funding, perhaps we can continue to remain mindful of what we can do working together. With that, I'm open to any questions.
Yeah, a quick review. We'll be discussing this in greater detail with more presentation at our workshop next week, 6 o'clock.
Correct, next Monday at 6 o'clock. And I guess the other thing that I would add is a copy of this will be available at City Hall for anybody to review. I made a full copy and given it to a reporter at the ledger, and any city resident that wants a copy of this recommended budget can come in, can make a call, send me an email, and I will make a copy for you.
And then we're looking at budget control and whole adoption at our main meeting.
It'd be your second meeting.
Second meeting, thanks, so we've got some time. And again, but Mark is asking if there'd be any questions or concerns at this point that you might work on between now and next week. All good? Good for now. Thank you, Mark, and thank you for all that work and your staff, too, all the efforts and coordination that they do. It's a team. I have made us the monthly reports from various departments, and they're in our packet for our review, and if you have any questions or concerns about the various departments and what they does. Seeing none, then we'll move on to item nine, council comments, and we will begin with Councilmember Mayor.
Our authority met last Monday at 5:00. We were asked anonymously to look at the cost of the, what would cost the authority to be independent from the City of Lowell, so it's administrative duties that they already do for. We're working in that, we've split them in a few groups, three different groups, and we're going to look at individually and come back and report something at our next meeting. I remember James Thomas is doing there, I have Walton's doing there, and me and Mr. Pasquale are working together on the city's statistics. Just a quick look, we're going to go. Our next meeting, the 11th, May 23, the fire council. Thank you, sir. Councilmember Altop.
I wasn't able to make it to my two meetings, so I don't have much to say, except I see all the streetlights are back on.
Yes, yes.
And so what was our, what was our results of our test?
I have three sets of comments that we received, that we tracked, and then I had a few other, to a certain extent, ladies' comments. I would say, my gut is that general consensus is that we're better off leaving the lights the way they are, that removing every other one creates a few darker spots that are a little bit of a concern, especially around crosswalks, the crosswalk curios.
Yeah, don't they have a lifespan of bulbs?
What? What's the question?
What is the?
You're talking lifespan of bulbs?
Yeah, what is the?
Those are five years.
Okay, so basically, maybe something that we could think about next time is maybe, before we replace them off, is maybe take a block and just turn the wattage down a little bit. You know, that would take the brightness out, but yet it would still be my, yeah.
You're talking, we're talking wattage or we're talking lumens?
Well, what, the wattage, you lower the wattage, the, the memory.
You're running it back to like an orange color later?
No, you can't, but what, what bulbs are these?
Over 45 watt.
And you can't get a smaller wattage?
I can get a smaller wattage.
But it changes color?
No.
So it would just be a smaller wattage?
There's actually more than that, but it's Kelvin, it's Kelvins that you look at. These are $5,000 Kelvins. You can go back to a $27,000 Kelvin, rank just like this, and it'd be more of a softer light, instead of a brighter light. Matt Jacob said, he knows.
Yeah, but that was one of the biggest things, is a lot of people think they're too bright, but if you lowered it down a little bit more, but still had the light all over, it might not be so bad. It was pretty dark in spots, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Councilmember Altop.
The planning commission is not meeting in April, so nothing to report there. LARA, there was no particular action taken on anything, so nothing to report there. Oh, as a general comment about the community, I've noticed that at Riverside School property, whoever owns that, windows keep getting busted out, and I see a couple more, and the entire area is getting to look kind of tacky. I think we're going to lose more windows up there, because there's a good supply of broken concrete around there, so I think it's just going to continue. I would just hope that somebody would note with the property owner that something needs to be done, rather than, or it's just going to continue to be trashed. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilson.
I don't have any updates on my committees, but I just wanted to comment, I've already talked about the budget, and I know Mark has said what a great teamwork it was, and it definitely is, but I do also want to say we appreciate your leadership, the strategic plan, so we have a basis for this budget, the strides we've made in the city. I know you've gotten a lot of bad press lately, but this is one of the reasons why you were hired, and you've done an excellent job, and I'd like to tell you thank you for your leadership. It's important, it's made our community stable, so we can move forward. So thank you, and thank you, team, for doing it.
Thank you. I do have some things to report. Lowell Light and Power did meet last week, and reading from the manager's report, which was in our packet, just a couple of the highlights. 2015 is the year where we have to submit a new two-year renewable energy plan to the state of Michigan under Public Act 295. The MPVA is working on this with us, and the numbers show that we have exceeded the 10% mandate, and will be close to 20% renewable energies by the time the biodigester is fully operational. This will put us at one of the highest percentages in the state of Michigan, and so kudos to the Light and Power for being way ahead on the renewable energy issue. Line workers rodeo and operations and technical conference is being attended by Lowell Light and Power, and that will be May 15, 16, 17. The biodigester continues to move closer to full operation. Biogas is being produced and is running on a more regular basis. We are in the process of completing the final fill of the reflow portion of the digester and are making deliveries of waste from Swiss Lane daily. Work continues on the installation of the Rolls-Royce turbine, and we keep moving forward as funds do allow. And then next month, on policy review, they'll be looking at personnel policy and book, and there are some revisions that are necessary due to the IVW contract ratification, as well as some other tweaks that they're looking at improving in the personnel handbook, so that will be coming up at their main meeting. Employee volunteer policy, they're looking at a number of organizations that do allow employees to volunteer their time and contribute back to the community while perhaps on the clock, so they're looking at how Lowell Light and Power can further impact our community with various ways of having their employees be active. And again, they'll meet again in May, and things are proceeding quite well at Light and Power, and thank you, Greg, for all of your work and effort. The Lowell Chamber of Commerce has had some very successful events, Grill's Night Out most recently, but coming up in May, on May 20, is the annual gathering, it used to be called the Annual Winter Gathering at the Chamber of Commerce, but May doesn't qualify so much for winter, we hope. And person of the year this year, we will be honoring Rick Sees, who has contributed a great deal to our community over a number of years. Business awards, the Business Appreciation Award will be going to Kaiser's Kitchen. The Best Business to Watch in the future, the Rookie of the Year thing is River Edge Bed and Breakfast and Gathering Place. Most Promising New Business is Red Bar and Market. Nonprofit Spotlight is Lowell Women's Club and all that they do for our community. And Brick Awards go to J&amp;H Mobile and Timson Transportation. And again, their Winter Gathering is May 20 at River Edge Bed and Breakfast and Gathering Place with social hour at 5:30 and dinner at 6:30. So if you'd like tickets and attend that, you can do so by checking out Liz in the Chamber of Commerce office there, and she can help you do that. And the Look Memorial Fund will meet on May 20 for the distribution of funds that are available. And along with that, I'd like to say that this is a terrific community to live in, and Mark, thank you for your leadership also, and the staff, we've got a great thing going. And with that, we'll turn to the city manager's report, item number 10.
A few things in addition to the Lowell Light item on my written report, but just a reminder, we have a workshop scheduled for next Monday at 6 o'clock to go over budget recommendations in detail. Please remember to bring your budget notebooks with you to the workshop. I mentioned Ron Woods, our interim director of Public Works, he started today, and we can go to, you have an opportunity to meet him. Ron comes to us as the retired public works director from the city of Kentwood, and I think he's going to be fantastic in the transition for us, so we can take some time to walk through a very deliberate process to hire our next DPW director. The farmer's market, you may have noticed that the sign is up at the corner here, and they're in the planning stages and looking forward to relocating here. It's going to be great for the area. I've already started practicing parking in the sideline instead of going out across the street. The lot will be closed on Thursdays beginning very early in the morning until they will be up by 6 o'clock. And I wanted you to know that grants have been submitted. And I wanted you to know that grants have been submitted for the portions of the Fred Meyer River Trails from Lowell to Greenville and then from Lowell to Serenick. And so there's a group that's working at submitting those grades, the DNR grades have been submitted, and Kent County Road Commission, Kent County Parks, working on the transportation grant that will be submitted. So that, at least the funding portion of that is underway right now. Just a quick update on the housing we could make, we're continuing to work through our process with that. It's a little more complicated than it might have originally seemed, but we are working through that process, working with the bank and making sure that we adhere to our ordinances, having to, what's required of us and our local core ordinances. And then finally, happy birthday, Mayor Hodges.
Thank you. 65, day 65. Anyway, thank you. We're moving on then to appointments, and much younger Mark Munt has agreed to serve on the Construction Board of Appeals. So the mayor would like to nominate Mr. Munt for that position with Council approval. Is he good with that? I'm sorry, you're in. Thank you very much for serving, Mark, and you do a lot for our community already. This will be one more wonderful thing, so. And with that.
I moved to your turn.
Good. Good move, the second to a turn, all a favor. Yes, thank you very much.